Welcome everyone to the November 3rd, 2025 Meeting of the Statesville City Council. Please rise if you're able for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
Good evening, everyone. Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you so much for this day and thank you for everyone who's gathered here tonight. I pray for our city council members as they make decisions affecting our community and I pray for everyone who is planning on speaking tonight that they will have wisdom. And in your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag-
Flag of the United States of America-
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. I don't think we made any changes to the agenda, so is there a motion that we adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Behind tab five is our Code of Ethics and the front and center strategic plan that we provided here too. I want to take this opportunity since it's our last meeting before Veterans Day to recognize all the veterans in the room and please ask you to stand so that we can give you our appreciation for your service to our country. And also, I want to introduce our latest senior management hire. Sharisha Hills has joined us as Ron's assistant and she started last Monday, I believe, and we're happy to have you with us, Sharisha. Tomorrow's an election day in the city of Statesville. I hope everybody knows that by now. My understanding, I think somebody told me that 2,066 people voted early. So that's, uh, that's good, that, that, if that, if that holds to what has happened before, then the decision to move it to November may, in fact, have been a good one because it'll be a higher turnout than we've had in some of the recent elections. So I encourage you, if you haven't voted, to please get out and vote tomorrow. Also, trick or treating in Statesville seemed to have gone very well and Pumpkinfest was a, a big success. So thanks to all the folks that promoted that on behalf of the city. We thank you for bringing these events to our town and particularly to our downtown. The consent agenda, these are items that are considered to be routine and will be enacted with one motion. No separate discussion unless a council member requests. Those items are item A is to consider approving the October 16th, 2025 pre-agenda meeting minutes and the October 20th, 2025 regular meeting minutes. B is to consider approving the SMS privacy policy and terms and conditions for SMS text notifications in support of Statesville Public Powers outage management system. What that basically will be is you'll have the opportunity to opt in to get a message when we're having outages, so you'll know, uh, time and place and when you'll be restored, that kind of stuff. So that's a good thing. Item C is to consider approving a 10-year lease with the U.S. Civil Air Patrol for $2,200 per year. Item D is to consider passing second reading of an ordinance to annex AX 25-05, which is 407 and 417 Central Avenue. Item E is to consider passing second reading of an ordinance to annex AX 25-09 Statesville Fire Department Station 5 at 533 Gaither Road. Item F is to consider passing second reading of an ordinance to annex AX 25-08 Compass Data Centers. And item G is to consider approving a request to demolish the structures located at 118 and 120 West Front Street, which are the green building and the parking deck at the Vance Hotel. And in addition to that, we wanted to add to that to remind the developer of paragraph A in the First Amendment to the Master Development Agreement regarding timelines and to authorize the manager to be in communication with the owner and developer about that provision. Uh, that's the consent agenda. Are there any of those items you'd like to have removed? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. First item on the regular agenda is to consider passing second reading of an ordinance to annex ZC 25-04 Hillhaven for properties located at the intersection of Shelton Avenue and Hillhaven Road to rezone from Iredle County R20, HBCUD District and NB District to City of Statesville RACZ District. Mr. Calder.
Uh, yes, Mayor, thank you very much. I do have the PowerPoint if anyone needs to look back over it, but usually we just answer any questions if you have any.
We're, we're going to discuss the sewer capacity, I think. We wanted to continue that discussion. Are there questions other than those regarding sewer capacity that council would like to ask Mr. Calder at this point? We'll have another chance, I'm sure, to do that. Okay. Um, let's, Ron, you wanna, you got the, can you put this, you wanna put the stuff up or? Okay, there were, there were some.
I don't, yeah, I don't see it, I'm sorry.
There was some discussion following the last meeting about the numbers that were presented, uh, by the various people and organizations regarding our sewer capacity, particularly in the Third Creek Plant, and so that has precipitated some additional conversation and review of the numbers. Dr. Vaughn, you need to probably be close up here too. Oh, there he is. So I guess the manager will start us out on that and...
This might be the best place to start, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna rely on Mr. Vaughn for some of this because he is certainly the expert in it, but, so thi- this is, this is kind of new information. We, we have to track our capacity and, and keep, you know, current flows as well as obligated flows and, and what's called an FTSE that goes to the state. So we, we have, this is something that's a full-time job, basically, with, between the two plants. And so as we get new development, I'll just jump to Third Creek. So as we get new development, uh, what we do is we keep basically up with, with this table. The average flow at the Third Creek wastewater treatment plant is currently, and I'm gonna work off of percentages, I think that's a little easier to understand, is currently at 14.5%. So, so we're sitting today, that's a, that's a solid number, we know, the state has a very similar number as well. FTSEs are flow tracking sewer, for sewer extensions, uh, that's what the acronym means. And currently, that means that if you have a development that has moved through the system, that you, that has gone so far as to get an FTSE letter, you know that is happening. So that is, that is a flow that we plan for and that we submit to the state. And currently, we have 11.7% of our plant capacity dedicated to FTSEs. So the FTSEs that are on file are over here on the left. So you can see, these are all of the recent developments that you've seen, uh, some of these, uh, some of these you haven't seen because they were down in Troutman, because Troutman has a line as well, uh, that contributes to the Third Creek Plant. So that's what these FTSEs are on the left side. So that's in this kind of orangish color. So our working regulatory number is at 26.2% at the plant. So FTSEs plus the average flow is the 26.2. So we take it another step. So the future flows in blue are showing up here. So this is future programming that we know, that has gone through a rezoning process, is somewhere in the process that we know about, uh, because Bill and his staff are good at, you know, we, communicating with planning, watching as these things go through the system and tracking them on the, on the backend, which is where we are today. So those will eventually, if they continue, go into the FTSE category and be submitted to the state, but at this point, they are not, they are not to that point. So again, the working regulatory of 26.2%, that's a har- fairly hard number. Then you add the 32.8% of what we know is coming down the pike, or what we think is coming down the pike, it gives you a capacity, a plant capacity of 59%. So that's a, that is a pretty high number, but when you jump over to the plant capacity, this is where we see a decrease in the actual flow. So the state mandates that we, uh, that we plan a higher amount, and I'll let Bill explain the specifics on this, but we plan for a higher amount, but when the specific flows come in, they come in much lower than the amount that we planned for. And it allows, it gives, it gives the plant the ability to have flexibility because you don't want to plan for the worst scenario, you want to build in some cushion. So what we're estimating is that after all of the, the future flows, the working regulatory, that we're going to be looking at probably somewhere in the area of 29%. So you see, that's a big decrease from the 59% that you have here on the plant capacity number. Bill, you want to mention, talk about that?
Yes, sir. Good evening. Basically, the difference in the two numbers is this. The FTSE number and the futures are based on the regulation that tells us we have to plan for 120 gallons per day per bedroom. So a three-bedroom house plan is 360. That's a conservative number in the planning process that the state evaluates, okay? In reality, mom, dad, two or three kids, dog, cat, washing machine, one or two loads a day, you're probably going to use, you know, on average, a third of that, 120. So as a development builds out, it becomes part of that first number, part of the average flow. So you gain about two-thirds of that planning number back. So it's a stair-step process on the FTSE, which is the regulatory form that we submit to the state, that they track the capacity of our plant with. So you kind of go up, you go up a couple, you come back, you go up a couple, you come back. So if something comes off of the contributory obligated and becomes actual flow, you get a little credit back that you can then use for something else, you know, or your looks, your numbers come better. So from a regulatory standpoint, that 59%, if nothing else came down the pike, we'd be about 60%. And the, the issue is, we know that when the state says, when you get to 80% on that yellow number, on the yellow number, you have to start planning an engineering alternatives assessment by regulation. That means you have to start planning, what are you going to do to help your plant take more flow based on the regulated number? When you get to 90%, the yellow number, you can't do any more FTSEs, you're constrained until you put all that extra capacity. So you see, it's, it's a creeping up process. If nothing else ever came, using on average 120 per bedroom, take that down to one-third for actual flow when it's built out, the plant would have a capacity of about 30%. You know, you'd be less than 30% hydraulically at the plant if nothing else ever came to Statesville. So there is not an issue at treating the, the wastewater at the plant when you, when you look at it that way. So don't get wrapped around the axle on the yellow number, that's what they force us to plan, that is the engineers, me and DEQ, being very conservative and forcing that. What that really gives you at the plant, that gives you surge capacity. For example, Super Bowl Sunday at 5:00 PM at halftime, everybody gets up, everybody flushes, what do you think happens to the sewer system? You get a surge that goes down the pipe and that gets to the plant. So that conservative in there helps the plant handle surges, it helps it handle other things like any infiltration that might come to the system when it rains, you got a cracked manhole or a cracked pipe, rainwater gets in. So that's the conservatism in the plant that allows us to protect the environment, that the plant doesn't overflow and put raw wastewater into the, into the environment. So you got to understand the difference between the yellow number and the one on the right, the light green number, and that's it.
So one, one last thing to add. So, so this is, and, and we got this, this information late last week, um, so we were, we were kind of asked to show what, what is it that the state is showing, you know, kind of a validation of our numbers. So these two boxes at the bottom, really, all, all the state shows us are, you know, this is basically a clip from one sheet of paper, uh, so these, this is for Third Creek, this is for Fourth Creek, and basically, it's some of the, this is, this is the aggregate data that they'll also show you, but this is the summary of the actual plants, this is the actual flow. So the average flow coming from, to Third Creek as they see it is 820,000 gallons per day. So this is today, oop, excuse me, straight from the, or DEQ. The number that we're showing is actually just a little bit higher at 870,000 gallons per day. So going back, the FTSE obligated flows for Third Creek, we're showing at 700,000 gallons per day, for a total of 1.5 thou, 1.5 million gallons per day. The state doesn't even break it up into the different plants as far as the FTSEs. So we have the same starting point and basically are coming up with about the same amount that are, uh, that are obligated flows, they're just at 1.13 million, we're at 1.11 million. So we're very, we're very close, uh, to, to what they have. We give them the FTSE numbers. That, that is a, that is something that goes straight to the state from the city.
Both of those plants were built for a 6 million gallon a day capacity, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I th- thank you, uh, Dr. Vaughn and Ron, but Ron, stay up there, or you can come back, I guess, here, uh, Field. What, what questions are there, um, from the council regarding?
Are, are we completely satisfied that we got all the potential developments, individual developments logged into that FTSE number? We're satisfied, are there?
Yeah, we're, we're satisfied, but, but the thing to remember is that it, it's a, it's a snapshot in time. So, you know, there's, there's developments that are being planned that we may not even know about, but everything that's come through here or that has had some level of approval, we know. But it's going to go up, I mean, there's no doubt. Statesville's in the middle of, uh, you know, a development boom, so that's gonna, it's gonna keep going, but as of today and as of what we know, this is as accurate, I think, as we can, we can come up with.
Mayor, I'd, I'd just like to say, I know we'll have more discussion, but I, I expanded this plant with my, in my tenure with the city, I expanded this plant twice and modified the NPDS permit twice. To do that, you have got to live with these numbers and you've got to understand how to interpret these numbers. And like a lot of numbers, sometimes you can get wrapped around the, the wrong one. But the bottom line is, you over-project when you're allocating out and then when the developments are built or the manufacturer comes online, you get a real, the real flow, and that's always down, it's meant to be that way. And in looking at these numbers, this plant does not have a capacity problem right now. It may one day will, but it's, it's not now. I, I don't have any problem with it.
Other, other questions or comments about this part, and then we'll move on to the other areas of discussion and entertain a motion regarding second reading.
I, I had some reservation about it, but after listening to Mr. Vaughn and, and the presentation, I'm satisfied that there's a plenty of capacity left in both of those facilities. I think the mayor said it early, you, you can think of a lot of reasons, you know, on that, if you care to, to, to deny this request, but the availability of sewers doesn't justify the denial of it.
So we looking for a motion?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion that we approve the second reading.
Second.
There's a second. Further discussion? Further discussion?
I want to have, I want one question. Believe it or not, most of the complaints that I heard are about traffic on Wallace Springs Road, which this development is not going to contribute significantly to the traffic on Wallace Springs Road. Most of it go out to 21. As I look at the plant, Mr. Herman, is there any access from this development to Wallace Springs Road? Directly on the Wallace Springs Road? Because Wallace Springs Road's getting crowded.
We do not have an access that opens up to Wallace Springs Road.
Is there further discussion? We have a motion second to approve second reading. If not, anticipating a division, will all in favor please raise your hand? Those opposed? Motion carries on second reading, five to three. All right. The next, the next matter is to conduct a public hearing and consider passing first reading of an ordinance to annex AX 25-10 Hillhaven subdivision. Mr. Kirkendall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. All right. So we do have annexation case number 10 for the year, which is the Hillhaven subdivision. The applicant is Mr. Robert Williamson. It's approximately 145 acres, and it's at the intersection of Hillhaven Road and Shelton Avenue. So the rezoning was approved by y'all at the last meeting, with approximately 385 single-family homes across 13 parcels. Statesville Public Power can serve the site, as well as city water and sewer. The current tax value is right around 2.1 million, and the value at full build-out would be 138 million. Here is the concept plan. As you can see, it's on the western side of Shelton Avenue and both sides of Hillhaven. And, as you can see, the connection to Wallace Springs Road has been taken out. Mr. Johnson? And so with the staff recommendation, it has been the policy of the city to annex these properties that are in close proximity to the existing city services. This is also within Tier Two of the growth area of the 2045 Land Development Plan, and utilities are available. Therefore, staff can support recommending the passing of this first reading.
Thank you.
I'm happy to entertain any questions you have regarding the annexation.
Questions before I conduct the public hearing?
Yes.
If they had not applied, Mr. Kirkendall, if they had not applied for city annexation and rezoning, this property could have been developed under the county land use plan as residential by right.
Correct.
They've simply gone to the county and started applying for, well, laid out.
Yeah, R20, whatever the R20 zoning rules of the Iredo County.
Well, if they had water, they might could go R15 under county with clustering. But they could have, they could have built several hundred homes in there by right under counties only. Am I correct on that?
I don't know if I can answer that, not being a county employee, sir.
Right. That's, that's my.
They would be able to develop it by right under the county's rules.
Yes, sir.
All right. Several, I'm going to open the public hearing. Several people have asked to speak during the annexation process. First is Brian Martin, if you'll come forward. And in the queue is Kathy Udi and then Anita Udi. Mr. Martin gives an address of 148 Hillhaven Road. Good evening.
That's correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure. Mayor, I just want to speak for a moment on this from the perspective of public safety. And it may take a minute to get there, but I understand part of this proposal is to widen Hillhaven Road to four lanes. And that may be honorable and virtuous, but it's not really going to change the traffic, the ability of traffic flow in and around Hillhaven Road. As part of the materials that were distributed, there's a copy of a map, local area, and within a two-mile radius of Hillhaven Road, there are at least 12 dead-end intersections. And we all know, dead-end intersections will never enhance or facilitate traffic flow. In fact, they do just the opposite. Dead-end roads or dead-end intersections force every motorist to bring their vehicle to a complete stop, wait for cross-traffic to clear, and turn right or left. And there are 12 of these intersections within two miles of Hillhaven Road. It's very challenging to see how traffic flow is going to reach a level that will prevent backups and, worse yet, gridlock in this area. And here's the public safety aspect of this. When a road's capacity is exceeded by the traffic volume, that's when you're going to have traffic accidents. There was an accident just on Shelton Avenue as I was coming into town. It was bumper-to-bumper all the way from Hillhaven Road, you know, an hour ago. There was one, one accident, but it's, it's just difficult to see how traffic's going to move through this area. It just, it's impossible. And when we have, you know, volume of traffic exceeding roads' capacity, that's when traffic accidents happen, that's when emergency response is going to be needed. Here's the question. How are emergency response vehicles going to navigate their way to where they're needed when traffic is backed up and, worse yet, gridlocked? How are they going to do that? How's that going to happen? There are sections along all these roads where there isn't enough room along the side of the road for normal or regular traffic to get out of the way. I've got pictures there, okay? It's, it's going to be a terrible mess.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Kathy Udi, and Anita Udi will follow. Okay, thank you very much. Welcome.
I'm Kathy Udi. We live at 422 Wallace Springs Road, and we're very grateful that we don't have an access road coming out across from our driveway. But what I wanted to talk about tonight is the runoff pollutants in a drinking water and grazing area of cows, and there is a pond down there that is the water source for those cows. And it's the Troutman Farm. They raise longhorns, and I guess they still have black Angus. But runoff from subdivisions can cause pollutants like E. coli and salmonella from construction waste and residential yard streams and ponds used by the livestock. There's fertilizers and pesticides and herbicides that homeowners will use, but also when it's, when it's being built out, these chemicals will leach into the groundwater and flow to the ponds themselves, which of course will kill a cow. Hazmat waste and high nitrate levels cause algae buildup, algae blooms. And of course, erosion and sediment and excessive mud can also pollute the drinking water and the pastures. And then, of course, you have any kind of nails or anything that's coming off of the construction sites. And you also have, when you introduce impermeable surfaces like roads and rooftops, then it changes the flow of the water. And then that's a natural area out there with, with peaks and valleys and, and natural springs and things that feed into that pond. But the traffic issue, and of course, we all have wells out there, too. We don't want our well water to be, be contaminated either, because we paid a very huge price for our well, and that's the only place that it could be put, according to the county. So we really don't want that contaminated. But in, in just the, the 2025, going to the traffic and speeding, the, the owner down there of those cows have had five vehicles through his fences due to speeding and the, the road itself, the curves and, and, it's just, the amount of traffic and also the, the volume of, not just the volume of traffic, but the, the speed at which these people are going. We have about six buses that go through in the morning and the afternoon, too. And of course, like I said last time, we have a lot of construction traffic. I don't know what that is. You know, the dump trucks and the tractor trailers bringing in pipe and, and trusses and things like that, and it's constant traffic. But it's not just that we're not going to have any more traffic feeding out of that neighborhood on the Wallace Springs. We already have enough of it that it's, it's a hazard. It really is a hazard, and it's, it's a quality of life issue right now. All of us that grew up out there remember it when we could ride our bikes and not have to worry about somebody killing us. But obviously, those days are gone, but we'd love to see a larger, if this is a done deal, we'd love to see a larger border of trees to protect the pond down there, and protect the pasture land, and protect our drinking water and the area across the street from us. And I just urge you to rethink this, since we already have two cluster subdivisions out there already, and there's more land that's for sale coming up, and who knows what that's going to be. So we just ask you to maybe shelve this and, and come back when it's an R15 project instead of an, an R8. Thank you.
The rezoning has passed. The topic before us now is whether the property should be annexed into the city of Statesville or not. I think the issues that have been addressed by the first two speakers would go to the rezoning. I'm going to have to ask that you restrict your comments to why the city should not annex this property that has been rezoned. Invite the next speakers up, which are Becky and Mike Edelbrock.
Good evening, council members. I'm Mike Edelbrock, 217 Southview Drive, Statesville. Your sewer report was amazing, and you said that Troutman feeds into it. Have you guys considered in the new giant development that they're building? Okay, okay, thank you. I'm asking that you send this back to the county or send them to the county, because this could be built through the county in an R20 or an R10. I know that's a zoning question, but I don't, I'm asking for the neighborhood if you guys would send it back to the county, because if you annex it and you stuff more homes in there, that's, that's taking away from what we're, we're asking. We're asking for at least an R10 or an R15. They want R8 conditional zoning so they can put all these houses per acre? Sorry, I know you asked for no zoning. It seems that their preferred builder is Madam A. With that being the case, if, if they do go with them, right now, Madam A happens to be in a current lawsuit for wastewater runoff and overgrading, which speaks to her concerns about the water running off. So I do ask you to consider that. And Madam A is the 10th largest home builder in the United States right now, which is awesome. Since 2020 through 2025, their customer satisfaction has gone down to a 3.9 rating, most of it being built quality, and neighborhood satisfaction is poor. So I'm just asking that you guys consider that we live over there, and this isn't what we're asking for. We're asking for responsible building. We, we do ask for growth, we ask for it in just a more responsible, matching the neighborhood type of manner. But thank you for your time.
My name is Becky Edelbrock. I live at 217 Southview Drive, and I did want to address Mr. Johnson's comment about the traffic on Wallace Springs. So Wallace Springs is going to receive a lot more traffic from this development. Even though there is no exit onto Wallace Springs, there is an exit at the top of Hillhaven right next to Wallace Springs. And so there is going to be additional traffic coming out of that area and turning left or right onto Wallace Springs, and it is going to, like she said, gridlock it. But then I also wanted to talk about the market analysis report on the land, the Statesville Land Use Management Plan, the 2045 Plan. On the SWOT analysis, the weaknesses, it's listed that there is a lack of middle-priced housing. What has passed, no matter what the zoning is, they're coming in with entry-level housing, which is what is bombarding the whole area. That's why it's this R8 conditional zoning, so that they can lower their prices. And that's not what the 2045 Statesville Land Management Plan was looking for. So we're asking that you kick it back to the county, because it does not fall in line with what your land management plan is asking for anyways. Obviously, I know you don't want zoning. They're claiming it's R15, it's like R15, which is a lie, because it's not. They're 6,000 square foot lots. Also, on the 2045 Land Management Plan market analysis, the positioning strategy is that this city has stated is under housing, you are looking for diversive, to diversify both product and consumer. You're not. By passing all of these developments that are going in all the same areas within, I mean, less than a mile of each other, they're all the, the cookie cutter houses, they're all the entry-level houses, they're all the, the high-density zoning, even though the city says that R8 is, is medium density, it doesn't fall in line with the county. The county states that R8 is high density. So there's a conflict there. So we are just asking that you guys really consider what is being said here from the developer versus the, the residents, and kick it back. Don't annex this into the city, please. Thank you.
All right. I think I see here that Chandler Trent is going to yield to Angela Matthews. Is that correct?
It's her.
Only one yield allowed.
Okay, all right, that'll be fine.
So we'll try to do it within six minutes, and.
Okay, all right, that'll be fine. I want to hand out packets, because I think it's important for you guys to have all the information when you make a decision, not pieces of information. Tonight, I'd like to focus on three additional issues, which will make the Hillhaven project not suitable for this location. I'm going to be speaking about safety and services, so please bear with me. In your packet one and two, you will see the NC DOT average annual tra, daily traffic for Hillhaven. In 2002, the total cars per day was 840. The last study completed in 2022 shows 2,200 cars per day, a 262% increase in traffic since the additions of Hidden Lakes and Wallace Springs. Page three was sent by the NC DOT, showing the priority for the removal of ice and snow. Wallace Springs and Hillhaven are a solid sheet of ice each winter when our area has inclement weather. Neither of these roads get salted or scraped until days after the storms. If you've driven on Wallace Springs or Hillhaven, both are very narrow, in my opinion, were meant to be farm roads. How will EMS or fire and rescue quickly access emergencies if we continue to add cluster homes? Page four shows the sharp curves on Hillhaven. Residents leaving this subdivision will put their own lives at risk when trying to pull out of the development, especially with 2,200 cars per day traveling this road. The hill that connects Hillhaven with 21 is very dangerous and stays covered with ice and snow. Many vehicles have been unable to stop, and at that intersection have ended up in the creek across 21. Page five. Page five shows you the curves and straightaway by the pond on Wallace Springs, which again stay ice during winter storms. Pages six through 11 show you the 2026 through 2035 State Transportation Improvement Program. Road additions are improvements for the next 10 years. Neither Highway 21 nor Wallace Springs or Hill Haven are listed on that schedule. The safety of our residents has to come first. Page 12 is a picture of a bald eagle, which is protected by the Migratory Bird Treaty Act and the Bald and Golden Eagle Protection Act. This picture was taken just a few feet from where this project is proposed on August 25, 2025. The Endangered Species Act prohibits the take of endangered species, which includes actions that harm protected species and their habitats. Lastly, I'd like to touch on how heavily dense housing affects crime. Pages 13 through 16 are the latest stats I could locate on Statesville. This information was released by the FBI in October of 2024. We have a great police chief and a great police department. I've served on the board at the Boys and Girls Club with Chief Only, also Mr. Mayor, and he's a great person of high integrity. But I've said before, resources are limited and our officers are spread thin. Based on certain trends in this area and the influx of people relocating to this area, the chance of becoming a victim of a property crime in Statesville is 1 in 26. Your chance of becoming a victim of a violent crime, including rape, murder, manslaughter, robbery, or assault, is 1 in 105. 94% of the communities in North Carolina have a lower crime rate than Statesville. Pages 17 and 18 reference the drug bust in Hidden Lakes by the Iredell County Sheriff's Department. Methamphetamine, Suboxone, and drug paraphernalia consistent with drug use and sales were located inside the home. Seven adults, one juvenile, and two infants were living in this single-family home. These are not single-family homes, guys, like, they're not. We can do better, and we can make our cities safer, but we have to make better decisions. Compressing people together like these neighborhoods do with minimal open space does not solve housing issues. It merely creates crime. And I have one question. I wasn't going to talk about it tonight, but I think I'm going to. Mr. Smith, if you could explain to the council on your spreadsheet why the Hill Haven project and McIntosh Farms are listed on your capacity spreadsheet when neither of those projects has been approved by the council? I didn't see the Troutman project on that spreadsheet either to take into consideration on capacity, and is there something maybe that you know that the rest of us don't? And why are there some approved projects, which I listed last time, why are they not on the spreadsheet? And also, if you could maybe adjust your number, and each of you council members can Google it real fast. According to the EPA, the average home uses 300 gallons per day, not 120, which was what was used on the spreadsheet. Thank you.
Hello, I was just wanting to my name is Camden Matthews, and I live at 210 Southview Drive. I'm here tonight to just share my thoughts on the Hill Haven project. This is my child at home. I've lived here since I was born, and I used to really enjoy my neighborhood and the country atmosphere. Over the last five years or so, based on decisions this council has made, I don't enjoy my home as much anymore. I recently completed driver's ed and have been practicing driving with my mother on Wallace Springs Road. To be honest, the traffic is terrible. People coming out of Hidden Lakes and Wallace Springs will speed and ride on my bumper. Wallace Springs Road is narrow and dangerous for cars at speed. I also helped hand out voter information in Hidden Lakes and Wallace Springs in September and October. Some of the people who live there were smoking marijuana on their porches or in their driveways. I could see them and smell it from the sidewalks. This type of behavior comes when houses are packed so closely together, like a big urban city. I used to feel safe in my neighborhood. Now, not so much. This is not what I want to see happen to my community. I am in high school, and right now, I don't want to move and have to change schools. When I finish college, I would like to stay in Statesville. If the city continues to approve developments like these at this rate, I feel that those of us in the younger generation will choose to move to an area that is more rural and matches the lifestyle that we grew up with and enjoy. Urban density does not belong in rural settings. My question to the council tonight is, my generation important to this town? Are you making the best decisions for the next generation? What will the long-term consequences of those decisions be for me and I if I have a family here one day? I'm asking you to vote no against this project. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you very much for speaking. Final person that's listed is Karen Gunther, but I think you intended to yield. Is that correct, or did you want to speak? Thank you very much. All right, that concludes the folks that came to speak during the public hearing. I'm going to close the public hearing and ask the council. Yes, we should have a motion first, and then we can have discussion following. Is there a motion regarding the first reading of this annexation request?
So moved.
Second to the motion.
Second.
Second to approve the annexation request. What what discussion is there?
I have some concerns. I know we have to start at the table, but with the information that has been gathered tonight, we had discussed the traffic flow, and you have to first approve so we can move forward. But all of the other issues that that they brought in about about their environment, was there any environments tests done on the land and their concerns? But I feel like those were valid questions, and that could be answered, but the process needs to be moved forward. And I'm asking, out of what has been said, Ron, and there are questions and concerns, can you give them an answer to those questions as we move the project forward?
Yes. If this gets approved and there are questions that come in that any of the staff can answer, we can certainly do that. I can address any that, you know, that were posed to me earlier, if that's what you're talking about. But yeah, we can, we can always do that.
And I think that is important because the more you're educated and some of the facts that we have now, and we have a staff that is willing to do whatever it takes to get the answers for what you all want. And I think that once we educate ourselves in our decision-making, you know, whether we agree to disagree. Because I was really concerned about the traffic flow, and then and and the developers had agreed to do that. So, I'm asking you, as the developers, you heard the concerns of the citizens, and I just want you to be able to take that into consideration, how you can give them the information they need to be able to feel this and work together, whether you agree or disagree in the process. Or you, you know.
Let's, okay, thank you very much. Is there further discussion on the question of the annexation of this property? I'll ask all those in favor, please to raise your hand. First reading passes by five to three vote, same same vote as the previous matter. And I think I think, Mr. Smith, the questions that were raised about the sewer capacity and all that, for sure, are things that we can provide an immediate, I mean, not not right this minute, but an immediate answer to because you have that information. The next item on our agenda is to conduct an evidentiary hearing to review the special use permit SP 25-02 to consider the construction of a ready-mix concrete plant at 552 Buffalo Springs Road. We'll give we'll give the folks a minute that want to. Okay, Mr. Kirkendall. Would anyone who and everybody that speaks on this matter will have to be sworn, anybody who anticipates speaking, please, Matt, if you'll get the Bible, let everybody place their left hand on the Bible, and we've got more if they, everybody doesn't have to have their own Bible, but you can place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. Promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
All right, good evening again. Before us, we have Special Use Permit Number Two for the year, which is Elite Ready Mix. So, the applicant is also the property owner. His name is Mr. Bobby Kohler with Elite Ready Mix. The property is located at 552 Buffalo Shoals, and he would like to build a ready-mix concrete batch plant at that site. Time out. Okay.
Let me ask first, did has any member of the council had any ex parte, which means individual, one-sided conversation with any of the folks involved in this process? Okay, thank you, you may proceed. My fault.
All right, recap here. So, Special Use Permit Number Two for the year, Elite Ready Mix. Applicant is a property owner, Mr. Bobby Kohler, with Elite Ready Mix. Property is located at 552 Buffalo Shoals Road, and he would like to build a concrete batch plant there. Again, as stated, this is a special use permit, so an evidentiary hearing is required where you must prove the four findings of fact. And for a staff level review, TRC did review this, and they can approve it based on compliance with the code. So, looking at the area, north of the site is zoned R-5, and there is Buffalo Shoals Head Start there. East of the site, you have McComb Steel, and that's across Buffalo Shoals, and there's a single-family home. South of the site, you have a heavy industrial zoning, and Cedric Holmes has an office there, and it's a commercial vehicle accessory. They're a fleet company. West of the site, you do have more heavy industrial zoning with ultimate towing and So, here is the zoning, so and utilities map. The city water and sewer would be available to serve the site. Statesville Public Power is there as well, and because this is already zoned HI, rezoning is not required. Here is a view of the site from Buffalo Shoals Road. When looking at this, staff looked at our 2045 land development plan, and this area does call for the area to be employment center or industrial flex. According to our plan, the primary uses would include heavy and light industrial and heavy When submitting to TRC, they did provide a concept plan, much like a conditional rezoning, they would be held to this. It's approximately three acres, proposed batch plant with an office building and some storage racks. Maximum height for the zoning district is 80 feet, and so they would have to meet that regulation as well. They would be required to place sidewalk curb and gutter and street trees along their frontages along Buffalo Shoals and Johnson Drive. They do meet the parking requirement, and again, the site plan complies with the UDC. In your packets, there was a typo, and since the applicant has submitted that, the one correction that was in your packet has been addressed. And so, the four findings of fact that must be met according to our code, which is special use permits. No special use permit shall be approved unless each of the following findings is made concerning the proposed project. So, number one, the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to the plan as submitted and approved. Number two is the use meets all required conditions and specifications. Number three, the use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, or that the use is a public necessity. Number four is the locations and character of the use, if developed according to the plan submitted and approved, will be in harmony with the area in which it is located and in general conformity with the plan of development of the city of Statesville and its environs. And so, those four findings of fact were proposed to the applicant, and so these are their responses. And so, for the first item, the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to the plan as submitted and approved. So, here are their responses. So, they will obtain and comply with the North Carolina Department of Environment Quality, Air Quality Permit for the batch plant. Enclosure of transfer points, water suppression on stockpiles, and paved or treated haul roads with trackout controls. A zoning consistency determination will be provided as part of the DEQ air permit package. Stormwater and washout controls, including their NCGO-1 stormwater coverage, line-covered concrete washout, and containment for the admixures and fuels and post-construction stormwater ponds will be sized per our local UDC, and that will be reviewed back when they, if they get approved, they would be required to come back through TRC where they would need to meet our stormwater requirement. So, for traffic safety, a driveway permit and site distance review will be done, as well as onsite truck queuing so that no on-street staging. They have provided or they will provide turning templates for the mixer and aggregate trucks, and the NC DOT Annual Average Daily Trip Resources will be used to validate capacity and the turning volumes. So, for the lighting and fire access, they'll use full cutoff LED fixtures. Fire code access loops and hydrant spacing coordinated at the technical review, and these measures collectively address dust, traffic, water quality, and emergency access in a manner recognized by state and local standards. So, for the question, second question, the use meets all required conditions and specifications. Here is their response. The application will demonstrate compliance with the UDC for special use permits, including a complete site plan that includes buffering, landscaping, parking, lighting, environmental controls that will be reviewed by staff and through this process at the quasi-judicial hearing. So, state permits and submittals, like the DEQ air quality we just talked about, will be secured prior to operations with all equipment and practices matching permit specs. Finding number three is the use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, or that the use is a public necessity. The site sits within an established industrial and commercial corridor, separating the plant activity from residential and supporting compatibility. So, buffers and screening, they'll provide evergreen-type B and C buffers or better with an opaque fence and berm along any residential interface, orient patch equipment away from sensitive edges, down shielding light and final and final widths and species per our Unified Development Code. Traffic and operations, they will provide onsite queuing, capped truck trips during peak times so that there's no on-street idling, and paved aprons to prevent trackout. Posted haul routes to arterial connections. And the fourth and final would be the locations and character of the use, if developed according to the planets submitted and approved, will be in harmony with the area in which it will be located and in general conformity with the plan of development of the city of Statesville and its environs. The property is identified in commercial and industrial records and lies within a corridor of employment industrial activity in the Statesville's urban area between Industrial Boulevard, and there are also nearby industrial listings and the airport and arterial access in the broader submarket. The UDC Special Use Permit Framework requires consistency with the city's development plan, and the city's land development plan provides the policy basis to direct employment industrial uses to appropriate areas with infrastructure and buffering criteria the site plan is designed to meet. And so, staff took those, and then staff made their own determinations, the four findings of fact, and made their own determinations. And so, for the first one is the proposed location is zoned HI, and there are similar uses in the area, including another concrete batch plant just down the street on Johnson Drive. To the rear of the property, our code requires a 30-foot landscaping buffer that would be buffering between the R5 or the Buffalo Shoals Head Start facility and this site. Number two, the use meets all required conditions and standards, standards and specifications, and use has been verified by TRC and the City of Statesville planning staff to be in compliance with the UDC. Number three is the, um...there are other similar uses to the adjacent properties. And finding a fact number four, the 2045 LDP calls this area suitable for employment center industrial flex. In addition, there's a concrete batch plant across the street further down Johnson Drive. So therefore, staff's recommendation is the site plan meets the requirements of the UDC, and TRC has verified that. The project is in compliance with the 2045 LDP as employment center industrial flex. It's also within Tier One of the growth area, and city water, sewer, and public power is available. Therefore, staff's recommendation is favorable to approve the special use permit contingent upon findings of fact and annexing the remainder of the parcel. And I want to pause real quick and go back and show the location map. As you can see, for some reason, whenever the city's limits were established back in the day, this property was bifurcated by the city limit line.
Thank you. Maybe we'll hear from all the speakers, and then we'll see what questions there are at that time. Will the other persons that wish to speak during this evidentiary hearing, will the next person, please come forward, identify yourself and your address.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name's Andrew Brown. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Finger, Roamer, Brown &amp; Mariani, located in Jonesville, North Carolina. And I'm here on behalf of the owner and applicant in this case tonight. The engineer was supposed to be here who helped develop this site plan, came down with the flu today and contacted me. So I've got a letter that I would present to the board from that engineer, basically saying that his professional opinion, we have met the requirements, and it's gone through the technical review process, and there have not been any issues that I know of that have not been addressed at this time. If it's okay, I would pass. I may not have enough copies, maybe you guys can share, but I'll pass these letters down from the engineer.
Without objection from anyone, withstanding, the council can consider that. The rules of evidence are loosely followed. But we may reserve questions for you regarding it.
And Mr. Kohler, the applicant is here as well, if there are any questions of him. I don't know if you're...
So you don't want to speak unless there are questions, right? Good. What, what questions?
I have one, sir.
Yes, sir.
There was a mention, Mr. Kirkendall, in his presentation said, "Any areas where you abut up to residential property, you may use a berm or an opaque fence." Did I understand that correctly?
And there is a 30-foot buffer on that side, I remember that. 30, 30-foot.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, let me... I'll back up, show you can see the street view. So this was just taken via Google Street View. I don't know the exact date, but the area in question, Mr. Johnson, is this rear property that, where all those mature trees are, that area would require the 30-foot type F, which is our widest and largest landscaping buffer.
Okay, so there'd be a 30-foot buffer, and would there be opaque fencing or a berm required along that if it adjoins a residential area? In addition to that?
I'll reserve that to the applicant.
Okay.
Not sure if that was shown on the site plan that was submitted. Wait a minute, I can see this small, uh... Not sure that it addresses a fence there. It just shows that as a landscaping barrier that would be 30 feet wide. Yes.
Does that include those trees?
So the trees, the trees will not be, the trees will not be removed?
Can't hear what he said. Pinnies?
I'm sorry. I plan on leaving all the trees to separate us for a separation. And I also offered to put a fence in or the berm, whichever suited either one. I didn't mind.
Excuse me, would that, you're saying you want to leave the trees so that would be in the contract that whenever we prove, this approved, that we need accurate to make sure that those trees will be safe?
I'm going to leave the real tall trees. That picture is actually a little old because they just put the gas line through there, and the gas line people cleaned out this corner of it, so it's nice and grass. But the real tall trees are still there, and I insisted that they stay because it's a separation buffer all the way down through there.
I guess the point I'm getting at, you're going to leave the trees. Is that residential on the other side of those trees?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you're going to leave that? Okay, I'm happy with that.
I think it makes a good divider just for the community.
Yes.
Is there any other area that's going to butt to residential that doesn't have those trees?
No, sir, it's just on that one side. The backside is industrial, and that's actually the towing company that you see in the background there.
Right.
And then the front side and the other side are roadways.
Okay, I'm satisfied. Thank you.
Put the area up.
I have a couple of questions of staff.
All right, yes, sir, Mr. Jones.
Johnson Drive, is that a city-maintained road?
I believe it is an NC DOT street.
Okay. Concern I would have is the concrete trucks turning out onto Johnson Drive. What is the current condition of that road right now?
So the ADT for Buffalo Shoals Road, according to NC DOT's data, is roughly, um... Now, I'm blanking, it's either 14,000 or 17,000 a day, but it's, we'll say 15,000, give or take, give or, give me some grace here. I don't know of any issues, I'd be speculative. But I do know, in reference to the large subdivision that would be approved, which is on our sewer calculation, is the Davis Meadows. They would be required to do a 100-foot right-hand turn lane coming south on Buffalo Shoals to turn on the Johnson Drive, and that would all be within the existing NC DOT 60-foot right-of-way.
So was that a part of the Davis TIA?
Mm-hmm, that was one of their Phase II requirements.
Is that requirement in the site plan?
So it would be within the existing right-of-way, so it would not need to be shown on this plan.
But what if that, is that, that development hasn't started yet?
Correct.
What would, what would happen relative to this if Davis Meadows, say, vanished or didn't, didn't go forward? They, would they have the obligation to do that?
They would not.
So a TIA is not required for this project itself?
No. The traffic generated here is not nearly enough to warrant a TIA.
So is the whole site going to be annexed in the partial, the remnant?
Remnant will be, yes. That's the request.
Where would the main entrance be? I guess that's my concern. Is it going to be on Buffalo Shoals or is it going to be on Johnson Drive? Or Johnson Street?
So here is the concept plan, and so they would be required, or this would be their two driveway cuts. Uh, I would clarify something. Because they're DOT streets, DOT has the say on the driveway locations.
Buffalo Shoals is DOT, is too, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I thought we said Johnson Drive was city-maintained, but no. You were saying it was state-maintained. Okay, all right. Thank you.
So I just want to confirm. North Carolina DOT approved that entrance right there at the corner?
They're requesting it to be 70 foot off of the corner. Once this approved, we submit that.
That's not 70 foot right there, for sure.
If you put it in a graph, it's 70 foot is where we got it laid out. But like, if you're looking at it there, it looks like it's 10 foot, but it's actually 70 foot when we lay it out on a, on a true graph scale to the DOT. And they'll give us a permit strictly for that, and, and we ain't opposed to moving it down. We're just trying to make a flow of traffic better with two entrances. This is all we're doing.
My understanding from the engineer that DOT was part of that review process through TRC, so they have seen this, and they did not have issues with it having asked them to address the entrance or exitway shown on there.
But it would not impact your operations to move it, um, clo...okay. Other questions for the group?
On either one of those drives, that'll be a point of ingress and egress.
I think the plan is for it to be one entranceway and one exitway there, not both ways at each site.
All right. We're, we're asked to consider approving the construction of the Ready Mix Concrete Batch Plant and the annexation of the balance of the subject property. Leah, would you want these finding of facts read in, or can we just say the finding of facts under 2.1 OD?
Um, I would just ask that you incorporate in the findings of fact that the planning department enumerated.
Well, is, is there a motion regarding?
Question.
So move.
All right. Motion and second to approve the construction of the concrete batch plant at 552 Buffalo Shoals Road and the annexation of the balance of the property. And I guess we should probably incorporate, since he agreed to it, that the, the existing buffer would remain and be part of the, the buffer required between their property and the residential area. Is that okay with the people who made the motion? Further discussion?
Can I just clarify the motion that's on the table?
It says, it says the construction of a ready-mix concrete batch plant, and, oh, and, and that, oh, subject annexation, not, not that we, we obviously can't annex it, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry. And, and to incorporate the findings of fact in 2.10... Section D. Is that good enough?
Yes, as long as the applicant...
Ready to vote? Will all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. We look forward to working with you. Mr. Lees, the, uh, please review the, we're going to review the preliminary results for the cost of service study for Statesville Public Power.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I just kind of wanted to give you guys a, a preliminary report on what our consultant Utility Financial Solutions found for, for our cost of service study. I'm not going to go into the, into the numbers, but I did just kind of want to go through, kind of their objectives on this was to kind of go over the debt coverage ratio, some minimum cash levels that we have to operate the, the system, and with that, the target operating income. And they came up with a rate adjustment plan based on what they found. And there's some sample rate designs in the back. So there, there are some pretty large assumptions. And kind of like Ron's pointing to, this is really just a snapshot in time. So things change just year to year. They've got the five-year utility funded capital just based on our, our projections, along with the fact that we know going to these NACMPA-1 meetings that our power supply is going to start to creep up each year. Right now, they're throwing out the 3% number, but that, that changes year to year and even meeting to meeting. Uh, these are just kind of the operating incomes as, as is, and what that, those assumptions will do to drawing down that, that operating income. But the main results, uh...get to it, right here. Just kind of show, we're a little bit behind on what we charge is what's, what's called the basic facility charge, which is those fixed costs. It, it takes us to serve those customer classes. So, um, I think historically, we've tried to, to keep it in line with Duke, and, and that's exactly what the $14 is on a residential customer. They're finding that based on the, the rate breakdown, if you can see in that right box, with the distribution, transformer costs, metering, and then just general administrative charges, we're really almost 27, 28, so almost double what it takes than what we're charging. However, we're in a very good financial state right now. And so what their, their biggest recommendation is, is to right-size those monthly costs according to the customer class. And to do that, you would essentially raise to those costs, but then lower and have small adjustments on the actual energy consumption. And so there would be a plus or minus 2%, but essentially it would be a revenue-neutral change. And it's kind of alluded to right here. There'd be a maximum 2% and a maximum decrease of 2%. Here's, I, I kind of wanted them to throw out a couple just scenarios because when you try to double somebody's bill, that's, that's a big deal. So we threw out some, some just ideas on what maybe it would take. And so this was just a $3 increase on that basic facilities and then lowering that consumption charge from, from 9.1 cents to 9, 0 and change. Uh, and that would impact an average bill a little under $2. So this is a bigger change. You could go from 14 to 21, about half of what's required to get us kind of where we're at, and changing the, the rate a little bit more from 9.091 to 0.086, and that would change it even less, about $1.65. So you have your fixed costs, and then you have your variable costs. And so to get that fixed cost right, you need to adjust your, your variable costs in, in the appropriate direction. And that's, that's essentially it. There's no real decisions tonight. I just wanted to bring that to, to everyone's attention. I plan on going to the winter retreat with actual decisions. And some of that includes what should our minimum cash allocations be? I, that's one thing I am going to challenge them on a little bit. And so I'm in the talks right now, since we just got these a few weeks ago, based on just historical events like Helene, what that cost to utilities, where we don't have to go out on debt to, to get that. Especially, um, coming from ERCOT system in Texas when the winter storm happened in 2021. It was, it was pretty refreshing to know when ERCOT said, "We got $48 million that we're asking you for," that we were able to pay that in cash and not have to go out like some other utilities or even file for bankruptcy. So, um, I am going to challenge what, what their number is for that, and we hope to have a, a better indication of what that would look like by the, by the winter retreat. So that's it. Any questions?
Any questions?
I've just been reading an awful lot about the strain on the grid and all that because of AI, and I've come to believe you're going to see a greater influx of data centers coming to this area because a very small percentage of utilities use any kind of renewables. And they're scared to death of utility companies that reuse, use a lot of renewables because they're unreliable. So if you folks that looked, have you looked at how many data centers could potentially be located in, say, this region? Because what I've been reading, there's, there's already some here, but there's a bunch coming.
I haven't looked specifically in our area. I know in the Dominion areas and Novak areas in Virginia, they're, they really surround it, you know, over DC. And they ended up putting caps on how much could actually come out there, but there was gigawatts and gigawatts worth of power that was being built over there. How they were able to do that, I really don't know. I know it's been just through time to get there. I know from the renewable side that it's not looked as the best source. However, it is easily dispatchable. It's the fastest thing to be able to build compared to, say, a nuke plant. So I know Duke has a lot of that stuff in the works. They, they have a lot of new generation plan that's coming, and I think over time, we're going to start to see that. to start to see that. Even a lot of nuclear is, has been proposed. And so a lot of those regulatory builds take a long time. But I think this is a good exercise to see what is coming in the area. I know whenever you get one, I'm sure you're going to get a lot of inquiries for others.
It seems that somebody up there somewhere, or there would be some coordination between the grid and say, I stuff or the, being in balance at some point.
I'm no expert by a long shot, but I, I do know, as Cody said, I mean, Duke, Duke's way ahead of the curve. They're, they're, they're planning, and they've got, because part of the contract that Electricity has with Energy and Duke Progress before they merge is that we can participate if we choose to. Additional
Supplemental.
Construction. But that the projects, that there are already projects that are well and far enough along in the process that they don't, that those decisions have already been made. So I mean, it's a, isn't it generally a five to eight-year process to get from start to end at a minimum? So they're, they're, they're well in the process for stuff that we're going to see come online. Probably 28 or 29, we'll have the opportunity.
Right.
Particularly as that debt that we know about goes away, it provides an opportunity maybe to get back in that game. But this is great, Cody. And the then council will look forward to hearing your presentation.
Yeah. Thank you all.
Well, thank you. Bill Vaughn, we're next is to consider approving a connection to city water service and to waive any annex, requirement of annexation for 305 Museum Road.
Okay, in your packet, this request is kind of unusual. Usually, but according to the, to the ordinance that y'all had passed, it allows the public utilities director to make a decision about the economic impact of connecting to city utilities. Usually, it occurs in cases where it's, you know, hundreds or thousands of feet to the utility and in comparison to the value of the property, it's, it's, you know, it's large. In this case, both utilities exist in front of the property. The property is surrounded by a city. So, you know, all the basic city services, of course, as the city manager pointed out, are, are really there. And the gentleman who's made the request has asked for a waiver to hook to public water without the annexation as required by the ordinance. The parameters that you gave when you changed the code a couple of years ago to the public utilities director will not allow me to make that recommendation because there is no engineering financial hardship involved. So the gentleman is asked that because he has an elderly father whose well has gone bad, he wishes to make connection to the city, city utility without annexation. That's the waiver request. But from an engineering standpoint, from public utilities, that's not supportable. So then it goes on your decision from that point forward.
And what, what decisions have we made in similar situations over the?
We've had several in the last couple of years since you changed the ordinance that it was an economic hardship. It was hundreds of feet, thousands of feet to connect to a city utility. Usually one acre lots or so, a well has gone bad or septic has gone bad. So I made the decision unilaterally based on the authority you gave me to grant those waivers.
Mr. Vaughn, in this instance, if we grant him the ability to be able to do this, does it set a precedence for other residents that may just want to hook on and not be annexed into the city as well?
If he's attached and you grant the waiver, his utility bill will be two and a half times the inside rate. But the, he will essentially be surrounded by city property in that case. The illustration in your packet shows you that.
Just to weigh in on that from a legal perspective, anytime we're talking about setting a precedent, we have to treat similarly situated people in a similar way. So it, it could set a precedent, yes.
So essentially, we could get a whole bunch of these requests if we approve his?
Possibly, yes, ma'am.
Any other questions for Mr. Vaughn? Dr. Vaughn?
Did you look at the tax value coming into the city along with the rate?
Quick back of the envelope, $200,000, I believe, is the property assessed value. So if you do the, you have about, what, 61 cent now on the mileage rate? So if you do that math, you assume $3,000, $3,000 gallons a month, you know, utilities, you'll probably have a $500 difference a year between what he's paying for water and the, and the tax rate back of the envelope calculation to the city's favor. So it's not a huge difference when you do the math.
And, and the, the cost to put in a new well on the site?
Wells, depending on how far he has to drill, can be, you know, $10, $15, $20,000 to put in a new well. That's very easy. How far has he got to go to get water? Fairies.
Financial gain to be annexed to tap onto the city's water versus having to drill a new well?
Depends on your amortization rate, how many years you do, yes, sir. But the, the cost of benefit return would be, you still have to consider the $20,000 or so dollars, yeah? So I would say he'd be making money in the long term if you do the math. But if you don't consider the cost of a well, then he's just paying two and a half times the water rate when he hooks in. Bill, what did you say you thought the two and a half times would be? Yeah, it's two and a half times 461, a thousand gallons, so 10 something.
How much would it cost for him to, how much does it cost for him to connect to our line?
$3,500 plus or minus, depending on what he has to do. That's system development fees and that's published fee schedule. So that's a one-time upfront cost that everyone would pay regardless of whether you're inside or outside.
Is there a time factor in getting this done, or just whenever he feels that he's ready to make a decision?
Yes, ma'am. He makes application online through the web portal. It can be done very quickly. In the past case where we've had people whose wells have failed, we've turned them around in a day because people need water. So he, he could have, in theory, if he had agreed to annexation, he'd, he'd had water a month ago.
Is he living in the house now?
Believe his father is, sir.
And the system development fee and tap fees are assessed whether you're in the city or not?
Correct.
That's a, I mean, that's an equivalent cost either way.
So he's saying he has a financial hardship. So I guess my next question is, does he have to have that $3,500 upfront since he's saying it's a financial hardship? Or will we allow him to have some type of payment arrangement?
That's been done in the past with customer service. I guess payment plans have been made available to personnel.
Gotcha. Okay.
All right, is there, what, what's the pleasure of the council regarding the connection?
I'll make a notion, a motion to deny him having it outside the city limits paying two and a half times.
So you want it?
So I want him to annex into the city, he'll get the water.
Water, and subject to annexation. Is to grant the request for water, but to require annexation into the city.
Same.
Further discussion?
Can you repeat that? Can you repeat that motion?
Yes, I can. It's to allow him to have water service, but subject to annexation into the city of Staceville. There's a motion and second. Is there further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are any opposed?
No.
Let's, let's have a show of hands, just so we'll be on the record. All in favor, please say aye. I mean, please raise your hand. I'm sorry. Seven want a cast. Okay. Thank you very much. Next is to consider approving to proceed with the temporary fire station number five project, including upfitting the house in site, constructing an apparatus bay, purchasing used fire apparatus, and hiring the necessary 15 personnel to staff the station. Chief Curfis.
Leader, Mayor, and Council, coming to you tonight with a proposal that we've moved forward with. Sorry. Fire Station Five, I know you, you've heard it many times. We went back and forth over the land purchase, started in January of 2020 with our first discussion at the council retreat. We moved up through 2022 where we had an external station study. We've looked at several different properties, brought several different properties back and forth to the council. February of '24, location was presented in closed, excuse me, closed session. Twenty, February 24, again, we looked at that the winter planning session. May of '24, it was, Station Five was addressed as a priority and brings us on up through October of '24, where multiple more options were presented. May of '25, Station Five remained. Y'all gave us the authority to make a contract with the land at 533 Gaither Road. We entered in a contract of June of '25, and that land was purchased in August of '25. Before you have a map that shows our current service area gap that we've had for many years right here in this northern part, the Highway 21, kind of Gaither Road area, the hospital, Hartness Road. On this map, it shows Station Five at our location that we purchased and the coverage it would gain. Can't see it real well, not sure why the map didn't, but it brings it up to Jane Sires Road is where the four-minute coverage ends on 21 with the location where Station Five will be. Since we've come before you in 2022, there's been 815 units proposed, and most of those have been accepted. There's some of them that's already in progress, some of them that are still to come, and that includes townhomes, apartments, and residential. Back in August, when we purchased the land, we, we come before you, told you we was going to start a hiring process. The city manager gave several updates of that with how many numbers we had. August the 1st, we started it. November, excuse me, October, we conducted interviews, and we have now established a list to hire folks. We are coming before you tonight with these proposals because we would like to extend job offers so that we can have folks starting in July to be able to train them, to get everybody certified and be ready to open the station, temporary station in July of next year. So the, the funding overview, original allocation, there was 3.5 million that was designated to the side in a project fund for Station Five. We acquired the property for 1.5 million, which leaves the current budget at 2 million. And that's what we're asking for. That would give us the money to do the facility upgrades, house apparatus bay, purchase of a used aerial apparatus, and hire the personnel and, and pay them and equip them until July. With the house outfit and apparatus bay and site work, we're looking around $650,000. That's to install new standing seam roof on the, the house, replace the windows, siding, soffit, exterior metal work, install gutters, replace the electrical panels, construct walls for a captain's office, remodel one bathroom to install, make it ADA compliant, kitchen sink, provide new furniture, work under the crawl space. There were some moisture issues that, that can be fixed. We've already got a price on that. Install a generator for the house and apparatus bay, construct a 40 by 60 insulated apparatus bay, complete the site grading building pad, construct a parking lot for the employees, install the concrete pad driveway and new culverts, and widen the entrance. For those of you who hadn't seen the house, here's the house in its current condition. These pictures was taken this week. Since purchase, we've been maintaining the yard. Asplun done some work out there, took down a lot of trees at no charge for us to do some training. So have a lot of those already taken down that would need to be taken down. Worked closely with city engineering department. We appreciate all their help and rushing and getting us in, but they've done our drawings, all our work so that we didn't have to go out and pay for that. So here you see kind of a site plan. It's a four-bedroom house, three-bathroom. So there's no major updates inside that will need to be done to make it livable and usable for a fire, temporary fire station. This, this is a little closer view of where the, the apparatus bay would be here. This is the house. And of course, we have our handicap parking places, concrete turnaround, gravel parking lot for the employees, and then a concrete driveway back out to the road. That used aerial apparatus, we've put in for around $600,000. We found some for more, for less. That's a good average number. So to acquire used aerial apparatus, to use it, this will get us ahead of the curve because right now, we're looking at three to five years to have a new one built. So this would give us time to get up and function. And as we start planning and building the new fire station, that's when we would look at ordering that new apparatus so it could come in time with it. And then once the new aerial apparatus arrives, the used one could be used for a reserve ladder. This is something similar to what we're looking at. It could be single or tandem axle, 75 or 100 foot. As we're looking at used, you know, it's kind of just what the market is, but that's something very similar to what we're looking at. We're not looking for a basket ladder truck like we currently have downtown. We're looking for a quint-style concept. This is more feasible for the apartment complexes and different types of buildings that's in that area. For the funding breakdown for the personnel, training timeline's approximately six months. The $750,000 would pay for the salaries, benefits. That's, that's all the, cover all the salary benefit cost, buy one set of turnout gear for each person, portable radio for each person, and SCBA mask for each person. So our expected outcomes would be to improve response times, enhance our coverage, support future growth, strengthen professional service delivery, and increase community and department safety. Just to give you an ideal, there's been 787 calls. It was from January to Ju, July in that area. So I would say around 1,600 calls just in this area. And that, when we're talking about the Station Five area, that's kind of the Hartness Road north. So you're looking 21 north, Cloverleaf, where all the new homes are built, over towards Jane Sires Road, where they're looking at the new townhomes. That's, that's the whole area that would take over Station Five, and it would come down into town, and it would be a backup to downtown. Now I'll turn it over to the city manager. He has a few comments that he would like to add as well.
Thank you, Chief. First, I want to thank the chief, you know, two, two things. One, we were very fortunate on this property that this house actually really does, I mean, it's well-suited for, for what they're planning or hoping to, to use it for. And then the second part of that is, I appreciate him thinking out of the box. And instead of just saying, let's build an $8 million station or whatever, let's just, you know, let's live here for a while and, and save some money. So I think it's, to me, a very well-thought-out plan, a good investment. And I appreciate the steps that the council's taken to allow us to get to this point because we're, we're pretty set for everything, including hiring the firefighters, but we're not set next year. And that's what I wanted to, you've heard me say it every time we talk about this. You know, we, we'll be fine funding the firefighters until July, but we do not have a funding stream to continue that, at least as of right now. We'll get into the budget discussions, as you all know. But when we get to that point, I do not see $1.3 million of excess revenues considering everything else that we need. So I just wanted to say that because I'm trying to give, give you that message every time we talk about it. So thank you, Chief.
Questions for, for honor of the chief? Steve?
One thing I thought about, you know, I think I made both of the motions to push money toward the fire department. One thing I was thinking about, you might want to think about is, and I congratulate our department heads and our city manager, we, the last few years, we've had consist, our fund balance has grown consistently more than we anticipated. And that's where that three and a half million dollars came from. And I think if you could, I won't be here, if you could, you could pull that stunt off one more year, Mr. Smith, that gets you to a revale year, and then I think, I think that'll flow you on out. That's something I would, if I was sitting here the next planning session, that's what I'd be talking about. Y'all done a good job to get here. I think you, you got a little bridge to get, but I think you feel, what's that fund balance? And hold the line on your year-over-year operational cost. I think you can get there to that revale. I think that'll get you home.
Third time's a charm. Would you like to make the third motion regarding Fire Station Five?
Well, I just, I, I don't want to make decisions this binding the future board. So I'll just stay in my comments right there.
All right, any other comments or thoughts? Seems to me we've dodged a bullet for a long time. Anybody prepared to make a motion on whether to proceed or not?
I'll do it. I'll second.
What, what's your intention? To go with option one, or?
What, what's your intention, to go with option one, or?
That's what you presented, wasn't it? Option one, basically?
Yes, sir.
Not, not construct the permanent fire station?
Yeah, that would be our recommendation, to, to build the temporary station, use allocated money to hire the personnel. We have a list, actually had excellent, you know, applicants, and we've got a list that we can pick fifteen from right now, make job offers and be, have them ready to start to July, because it, when you're hiring fifteen, we're, we're looking at a month or so to get them onboarded and, and different stuff, and then about six months of training, so, and I think saving the additional money from the station right now is more beneficial to the sta- the city, to use the temporary station and give us time for that revale and, and different things that's coming before we worry about building that permanent station, but we need to get apparatus and personnel in that area before, before something does come up on us and, and cause harm and make us relook at why it hadn't been done sooner because I think that the potential's there, especially with all the growth in that area.
Chief, uh, a question that I have regarding the house is, and you'll have time to think about this, but is it possible that it could be incorporated into the new station, since it's, I mean, it's, or, I mean, is, is there any reason that it couldn't, that, I mean, it may, may help the price of the new station at?
So the reason we, we went ahead and went with, you know, the standing seam metal roof and stuff, we, we built it, we're building it out for us, as well as purposes for the city past that, you know, even at the fire department, which we, at that point, you know, we could use it for logistics or staffing, you know, but even if we couldn't use it, I think the city could, as the city grows, you know, there'll be a storage building there that they, you know, maybe Parks and Rec or someone else, you know, if, if the fire department don't need it at that time, or, you know, it could be a satellite office for PD if they need it. I think there's many different uses that the house could be used for, even after we move into the permanent station, so it wouldn't be like we use it and then tear the house down and the building down, I think it would be, become part of the city and it could be used for something else for a resource.
And there would be considerable additional land available for some city purposes, even after the fire station's constructed?
Yes, sir. From, we, we would plan to, um, just kind of looking at it. The driveway right here comes out on Gaither Road, our idea would be right here, where it'd be the new fire station, kind of in front of the house, so you would potentially have this whole box of land that goes over to Radio Road to the corner at the intersection, you know, a, a community park, or, you know, whatever council deems, but that would be a good area for a park, I believe, and we could even make it fire apartment-themed park, but I do think that there, there is other uses for the city on the rest of that land as well.
Well, I sort of thought at first that we were paying too much for the property, but I think now that we've determined that the house is so suitable for interim use and some permanent use, that we came out pretty well.
Did y'all give any consideration for training facilities or training areas with all that land?
The city manager and I discussed that, but we wasn't sure that that was the right place to do that with the noise and smoke and stuff in that area, uh, with the church being right next door and the residential areas behind it, so we, we've looked at some other options, maybe off the beaten path for some type of training facility, but we just didn't feel like that would be good, being good neighbors at that location.
Has Mitchell gotten any farther with their project?
Yeah, very, very close, and got a, got a significant allocation from the county to, um, you know, how everything's gotten more expensive, so they're, um, the board met with, um, consultants just in the last month or so, so it's, it's very, very much on track, um, to do the first phase, which will, I think it's the, I can't remember if it includes the fire training tower, but it's definitely the six-hundred by six-hundred-foot pad. David, do you remember what else was included in Phase One? Did you hear that conversation when they came and spoke to the college? But anyway, anyway, let's, just for now, it's, it's, uh, it's turned into a twenty-three-million-dollar first phase, but they've got all that money. I think that's gonna be our long-term, all of our public safety training.
Yeah, and, and they, we've, we've been communicating, and Ron's communicated with Dr. Brewer, and I think we're probably looking at like twenty-twenty-eight, probably the time they get it open, but we've talked about some, maybe some temporary options in the meantime, especially like when we're hiring high numbers, it, it's hard to find a place, and we're using other folks' facility right now, we have MOUs with those that we're using, but it just takes our trucks out of the city.
How about the county? Has the county said anything about EMS at all?
They, uh, they was extended the option, and they, they are looking at it. Um, I know that their, their station study is being completed right now, and they're supposed to, I was told that they were gonna present that the first camp, uh, excuse me, first commissioner meeting in January, so we should have some more knowledge then to kind of how that's gonna look for them, for our stations, EMS, rescue, all of that together.
Uh, okay, we have a motion and second. Is there any further discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor of approving the implementation of Option One, uh, in Chief Kerfree's presentation? Please say aye.
Aye.
Are any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, and I, I echo the manager's thought, this was an excellent presentation, and your thoughtfulness throughout this project has been very significant, we appreciate it.
And we greatly appreciate all the support, y'all, y'all have made it happen, and we'll make sure that we use the city's money to the best, and we look forward to opening it and having everyone out to, to show them and getting fire protection in that area. Thank you.
Copy of the Hudson report now, so, uh...
Yes!
Chief.
All right, y'all, I promise I'll try, I will be, I'll try to be quick. Three minutes? You can put the three minutes on me? I can't do it. That's har- that's harsh, please. Okay, real, real quick, I, I will try to get through this. So, um, airport terminal building, construction update, uh, the building is looking beautiful, it, it is, you know, it is looking like, it's looking like an airport terminal. Uh, we had a meeting last week with representatives from NC DOT Aviation and, um, actually had a DOT board member there as well, uh, the mayor and Councilman Johnson were both there, staff made a presentation, their staff made a presentation, they, they filled the, the conference room at, uh, West Star, so very interested in our airport, it's, it's, it is very obvious how much, uh, attention we get as a general aviation airport in North Carolina, and the money kind of reflects that as well. So, one date I'll throw out, so in December, on December of one, uh, we are, the, the building will not be finished, but it's gonna be close, but that's when we're gonna have our soft opening, uh, for, for the, for the terminal, because a lot of these projects, well, all of these projects, you know, all of you as constituted today have been involved in these decisions, and we really want to, we really want to move them forward, and, and thank you for the support that you've given us.
And there is no restaurant on the third floor as of yet, is my understanding.
That's not what John's, John Ferguson told me.
We're accepting proposals, though.
So, the, the second big project, as you, if you look down the hill, you can't miss the parking deck, um, they're, they're going gangbusters there, um, the crane, it should be gone by the end of November, then they'll start working on stormwater work on Trad Street, hopefully, uh, by mid, mid-December, we get Trad back open again fully and get our intersection back. Uh, substantial completion for the parking deck is looking at, um, you know, March of this coming year, and then substantial completion of the PD is looking at, uh, probably August of this coming year, so those are, those are days that we can, those are endpoints that we can see, and I actually called Roger Young today as I was reviewing this. Roger, if you remember, is, um, the president at, at Delco Partners, and so as, the question I had for Roger was, okay, we can see August of next year as the end date for the PD expansion, when are you gonna start on the, the apartments? And so it looks like they're, they're gonna be submitting for approval with the DRC potentially in December, so in, in month, um, possible June or August, certainly summertime, uh, beginning of the, of the project, and, uh, definitely gonna have a, a permit by April. So they're moving along, uh, you know, everything's going there at, I think you said thirty percent construction drawings now, so they're moving pretty, pretty fast. Uh, we just talked about Fire Station Five. This is, uh, this is kind of hard to see, but this is a render or a plan of the mock, the next, the next phases of the mock, and on the right side of your screen, as, and I didn't get a chance to talk with Bo today, our construction manager, but on the right side of the screen is basically where your building, that is, the building or buildings where you're gonna house people are gonna be located, and that is right across from the employee parking, so on the north side there is Winston Avenue. The buildings, the colored buildings in the middle are gonna be for stor- or storage, parking, equipment, and things of that nature. So, right now, we're in the, um, space needs part of the, of the, of the project, they're doing environmental work as well, uh, to basically, uh, take a look at underneath all of the electric transformers and see what kind of conditions we have there, so we're waiting to hear back. So, uh, pumpkin fest this last weekend, um, thanks to the staff, trick-or-treating last week, thanks again, we, we, again, I, I say this all the time, I mean, we have the, we have so much community participation, and it really does pay off. Uh, a lot of the crime, uh, statistics that were thrown out earlier, um, you know, over time, as you all know, have gone way down, and I know that that is, in large part, um, community relations. Kimbrel Park, really no update there, we're still waiting on the shelter. Pickleball courts, if I would take a trip out to the MLK Junior Park, uh, at the old horseshoe pits, they've got concrete poured, they're gonna start looking like, uh, courts very quickly, and by mid-November, hopefully, we can have our final walkthrough. And keep in mind, this was an easy project because of what was already there. I saw you looking at me, Councilwoman. Uh, other recreation projects, uh, site planning for Newtonville, the, uh, which is the park between, uh, Mac Anderson and Statesville High, uh, we've let the contract for, uh, the audiovisual replacements at the Civic Center, so we're gonna bring that up to twenty-twenty-five, uh, and then make it much more convenient for people that are renting that space. So the, there was a walkthrough scheduled for this week, and hopefully, construction starting on Alexander and Stockton Street sidewalks, and then at the, at the flat, down at the flats, the wall, fence wall that's going in, there were so- there was soft soil there, but we're, staff has gotten, gotten through that, and they're moving forward I'm not gonna go through the water line, uh, we just, it's, it's gonna be a while, uh, we're, you can look at that last bullet, fourteen-point-eight of, uh, percent of the project cost has already been, uh, has already been spent of the twenty-million dollars, so moving along very well. It's a...
I, I think it's important, I've, I've heard it over and over during this campaign period, uh, the, the thing's still coming up that we're doing this to, to provide water to Troutman, and I, I, I just, if, if that's a fringe benefit, that's fine, but we're doing this to replace water lines that have been, uh, deteriorating over eighty years, and it's gonna, it's gonna set the city straight for the, for the foreseeable future, and I just think it's important to...
Yes, you, you're absolutely right, um, you know, a catastrophic event on this line is, is probably emptying our tanks, or, or, you know, that, I mean, it's, it's that old, that bad, um, it is a fringe benefit that Troutman would get water from this. Or a byproduct, maybe. So, South Yadkin Pump Station, um, didn't quite get it done, I don't think, but maybe we got a little time left. So, uh, pumps are in place, uh, we're really to the testing phase and ready to get that thing moving, uh, to get our secondary water supply up and running, um, that, right now, just validating that everything is working the way that it should.
Are we still talking to FEMA or whoever it was about whether we'll be, be reimbursed for this project or not, or?
I, I don't think they're taking our phone calls right now. Um, yeah, we, we will, but I, I, I do, I do not hold out any hope that we'll get much more money on that. The outage management system, I've mentioned that several times, I'll go through that quick. Um, I wanted to point this out, I, I thought that this was a, an interesting point, was looking at something totally different, and then I'll go quickly after this, but I thought this was significant. So, uh, infill development in the last five years, um, we have seen four-hundred-and-twenty-five new single-family residential houses, so that's, that's a, a large subdivision, and that's on vacant properties in, in the city. So as you drive around, you, I, I would almost defy you to go two or three blocks without seeing a house that, that's been built. So the total value of those permits, and that's the table up here, um, is, uh, sixty-eight-point-five million dollars, and I've done the math on that about five times to be sure, but that's a huge number, just based on the average amount of a hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand dollars per permit. So, the additional yearly revenue from these homes, if you just took that numbers, that's three-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand dollars coming into, to the city budget, almost to that, um, almost to the, uh, the, the fire station numbers or help with that. So, in addition to that, there were four multifamily buildings at a tax value of seventeen million, so basically, when you're looking at the yearly revenue, and that, this is not the exact number, I'll get to that, but you're looking at, um, eighty-eight thousand two, oh, eighty-eight thousand two-hundred-and-fifty from that, from those developments. So, went down a little bit of a rabbit hole on this and pulled out some, some of the example properties, your permit value is always the lowest number that you're gonna get, because it doesn't include land, and it's, you know, the actual cost of construction. Your tax value is when the county values that, so if you look at these examples, I'll just take you to the bottom number here, they're on the, the, the tax value versus permit value is about almost fifty percent higher. Then you take a look at the sales price of all of these, and that's another, you know, thirty-eight, or of a percentage of the tax, thirty-eight percent higher than the tax, and almost, or well, double the amount of the permit value. So what I'm kind of getting to here is that, that sixty-eight million that I mentioned on the previous slide, you're looking at up to as much as a hundred-and-twenty-million-dollar worth of new investment that has taken place just with these infill, uh, lots and the, uh, and the multifamily that's come along as well. So that's over the last five years. The, it, the, to me, another very interesting part of this, I highlighted the seven-hundred-thousand-dollar sales price, which is a pretty, pretty expensive piece of property, on a large lot, a large acre lot, one acre, so the value per acre of that property is four-hundred-and-twelve-thousand dollars and change. Look at some of these others, so on Durham Avenue, Fourth Street, low sales pri- lower sales prices, small lot, and the value is much, much higher. So, you see, there's, there's economics that goes along with these, with these subdivisions because that's it playing out right there. So I just thought that was interesting information for you to hear, especially just the sheer number of houses that have come in. I'll go through, I'll go over the key dates, you have all of those, you have our open positions, you can get to those on the website. Promotions and transfers, um, I won't go through all of these, but this is always one of, one of the things that we're, we're proud of. We want our folks to, to stay with us, we want to promote them, we want them to get, you know, to, to increase, you know, their value, their, you know, their pay, everything that goes along with that, and that career development gets that as well, these are certifications that our folks have all achieved. And then finally, uh, new positions, um, I won't go through all of these again, you met Sharisha earlier today, uh, or earlier, Erica Martin, who's also here, uh, two that I will point out in public utilities, uh, these were new in the budget this year, so Michelle Davis is the new admin associate, and Marius Clarandis is the deputy director, uh, these were kind of a long time coming, and in the police department, I'll let the chief, uh... Okay, thanks. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Just to go over one date that you had on there, um, the November seventeenth thing, because that's for everybody in the city, uh, we're having a retirement party for the retiring council members, so that's before our meeting at six PM, the, the entire community is invited to come to Twisted Oak and say, say goodbye, hopefully it'll be more kind than, than not, but anyway, um...
My apologies, I definitely should have mentioned that.
I will tell a quick story, when I heard it was gonna be at Twisted Oak, I, I kind of pumped up a little bit, I said, "Well, they go, they're gonna take care of us," you know, "They thought this deserved maybe a little something more than City Hall." I asked Emily about it, and she said, "No, uh, there wasn't a room available at the Civic Center," so we had to find somewhere real quick, so we moved...
Oh, no.
So it brought me down to earth real quickly, so, but we're, we're looking forward to that, and really, we'll, we'll welcome, I, I hope there'll be a big crowd that'll come there and recognize the service of the retiring folks. Uh, and before we, before we go, um, Doris Allison said she had a few comments before we, uh, make a motion to adjourn. a motion to adjourn.
I promise you, this will be quick. I'm making this comment because there was something that put on Facebook that has caused tension for some of the citizens in Statesville, and they wanted to know if there was a conflict between Councilman Watson and myself and Mr. Foster concerning a trip visit to, to, to the, what is it, down in Myrtle Beach. And it's not, it's not. We all have given, the city will give us information, and we have to do what we need to do, and it was not anything that Councilman Foster and myself had any history of, of knowing what was going on. But at this present time, I'm saying this to say that regardless of what people reading the things, everything you read in is not true. It's not true. And there's no ill will toward Councilman Watson, and we had no idea, you know, the situation, but I want you to know that we stand together as a council body, but we also stand as individuals, and we take responsibility of our actions. But what was on Facebook does not deter from who we are and, and our relationship with, with the city council and with Ms. Watson. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that concludes the, the agenda for tonight, so I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Shaver?
Aye.
We are adjourned.